Microsoft Teams has changed on me.
What if some of his citizens show up? Some of the citizens he talks about a lot show up?
Well, we give them their three minutes to speak.
They're watching, they're watching.
They're watching on YouTube. I know. Do you know how many people are on Zoom or YouTube?
Uh, let's see, right now, uh, nobody's on Zoom. Oh, well, uh, Teams. We quit using Zoom and as far as YouTube goes, uh, so far we're zero views.
And nobody on Teams?
Nobody on Teams either.
We use Teams at school.
Teams. I, I love it because it's free. We were paying for Zoom and, uh, I think Teams works better and it's free, so I think it is a, a much better.
Good combination.
That's right.
Jim, I don't think there's any need for us.
Yes.
Wifi.
Uh, Robbie explained today that there's another password that, that has to be used and it's changed, I think, orderly.
Mm-hmm.
To get into our system. So, the wifi password we have.
You gotta go.
Allow everybody to have access.
All right, we got a plane aboard, mate.
Without endangering our system.
I wouldn't, I mean, I wouldn't give it out like someone asked for it.
Well.
I just don't think we need to advertise it.
I'm not gonna publish it, but we have enough people that come in that do ask for it. All I'm saying is, you were charged with last time with trying to do something about it. I don't think you need to put a lot of effort in it. I think it's probably taking care of itself. I misunderstood. I thought, I thought once you got to wifi, you had access to everything.
Uh, I don't think so. I think.
No, you don't.
Yeah, you had to go through a firewall.
Robbie assured you.
Yes. Child, go.
Rock and roll. Six o'clock, six o'clock.
Robbie?
Okay, perfect.
Yes, sir. And then the TV, are we gonna be able to?
Yes, sir. Yep, you'll be good to go.
Am I recording?
Yes, sir. You are ready to roll.
Good evening. It is, uh, August the twenty eighth. This is a special call session of the town council. Uh, it is about six oh four P M. If you would, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Rigsby's gonna do our invocation this evening.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly father, please look after us and continue to bless us as we move forward with our citizens' agendas and wants and needs. Amen.
Please take a minute and review the agenda. I'll make a motion that we do adopt the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's call for a vote. Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foye?
Aye.
Mr. Landriss?
Aye.
And I am also aye. We're gonna open the floor for any public comments and we would ask that anyone that wants to speak, if you would, please limit it to three minutes this evening. There seems to be something going on on television. I'm not sure what it is, but anyway.
I'm a filibuster and we'll filibuster this.
Uh-oh. We're liable to lose members. Okay. If, if no one has anything they'd like to speak on. Uh, next item is a consideration of request for the Stokesdale Parks and Recreation Football Program to utilize town athletic fields for games, including potential installation of permanent goalposts and/or scoreboard at the town park facility. Mr. Foye?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, about thirty seconds ago, a minute ago, you were alluding to the fact that college football kicks off tonight at seven o'clock.
Oh, is that what that is?
That is what that is.
Oh, okay.
And, uh, n- not only is today an exciting day because NC State's football season starts, but it's, uh, there's a lot of positive momentum going on in the town of Stokesdale and the Stokesdale Parks, uh, program, uh, around their football program and, uh, I've, I've got a motion typed out, uh, but I think first I'd like to introduce Jordan Baumforth, the president of Stokesdale Parks and Rec, and invite him to, uh, share some information with us about the football program. Uh, it's, it's, uh, really exciting things and, uh, the possibility, uh, or the likelihood of the football program using our fields for games starting this year. So, welcome, Jordan.
Welcome.
So, Jordan kind of, maybe somewhere to start is, you know, when I, I, I was, uh, involved in Parks and Rec. It's been, you know, seven or eight years now. But, you know, we didn't have a football program. Starting a football program is really hard and then operating one is exponentially harder. So, uh, let's talk about this football program.
Yeah. First of all, thank you for having me here again. I feel like I'm here every couple of years or so, so I appreciate the alignment. Um, it's been four years, uh, since, uh, in the middle of pandemic. Uh, I had the, the privilege to, to come in here and help the youth and the community develop and grow. Uh, from time to time, certain folks will come up with an idea and, uh, inquire to its possibilities. And, um, credit where credit's due to Justin Lord and Mike Geisley, who are two very strong community members, uh, from the area that approached in twenty twenty-three. And, uh, and, and asked about starting a football program for the youth to get them out there, um, develop and grow with the principles that are listed on the website, uh, in terms of respect and, um, endurance. Um, from that moment, it took a little over a year to go through, uh, roughly forty thousand dollars in investments, new equipment, safety precautions, and other efforts to make sure we launched, uh, first and foremost, that the, the kids that were hitting each other with helmets would be safe. And then two, uh, with our volunteer coaches, background checks, and everything that goes into it to ensure that the, the program is abiding by, uh, local, um, regulations. And, uh, launched last year. We were part of Pop Warner, uh, which was great. We had a successful first season of four teams, eight U, nine U, ten U, and eleven U. And then this year we petitioned for the, um, uh, the most difficult league in the area, uh, which is the AFL, and they approved our, um, admission into the program. And, uh, we've grown by twenty-five kids year over year, uh, with more folks coming in. It is definitely an athletic program. And currently, we, uh, have played the last year and a half, um, over at the Oak Ridge Military Academy, which we're very grateful for to Dr. Wilson and the group over there. Uh, to that end, there is a goal to have a Stokesdale team play in Stokesdale. And, um, we, we couldn't be more thrilled, first and foremost, to have the program actually lift and grow, uh, prove viable. And at this point, um, we'd love the opportunity to actually see about coming home, uh, for the youth and these kids with the team.
Good.
Good. Good idea. Very good.
Now, Jordan, you were able to see the lights. You, you're thinking these will be some night games. So, do you think the, uh, field itself is laid out in a manner that could host football games for this league? And do you think the lights are adequate to, uh, you know, support such a program?
It's a humble way of saying the lights are awesome. Um, having, having gone through this a couple of years ago with the lights over the fields, uh, thanks to y'all in huge part. Uh, it, it takes a lot of work and effort to ensure the adjustments, the no dark areas, nothing like that. And, uh, Tuesday was the first time I'd seen them, uh, boots to ground. And it was awesome. Uh, it was well, it's safe and, um, it looked great. The dimensions of the field, after mapping it out, almost feel like should have been perfect for football, uh, this whole time. They fit to a T, three hundred and sixty yards, uh, width to width the same. And then eyeballing at least dimensionally where the goalposts would go, um, it's, yeah. There's no adjustments or modifications other than the possibility of putting in the uprights.
So, let's talk about the goalposts. Those will, uh, be new at, I guess somewhat permanent assets to the park. And, uh, from you and I's discussion, uh, you've expressed willingness that the organization would oversee the, the, uh, one, i- the investment and oversee the installation of that. Is that something that's still reasonable to?
That is correct. The board is on board, uh, with, um, the financial commitment to it a hundred percent as well as the installation.
Fantastic. And I did include on the agenda, uh, just if you wanted to talk about it tonight, the scoreboard. I don't think that's the most near-term thing on your mind, but, uh, if you wanted to discuss the installation of a scoreboard as well.
Yeah, I think that would be something that we would probably eyeball, um, in twenty twenty-six. Uh, I think the most important thing, if, if it is possible, uh, would be to get the goalpost up and trial out a few games, um, and just kind of see where it all makes sense. We don't want to have anything go up, um, with your permission without being mindful of location, uh, where it can best serve, where the games are and the visibility and all of that, so. But that would be something that we'd want to do, yes.
Now, as far as the goalposts are concerned, do you, uh, envision those goalposts being off the field whereas they would not negatively impact the soccer program or any other, you know, user of the field?
Correct. They're on the outer boundary of, uh, both sides, so they would not be midfield, innerfield, or anywhere near, uh, that would impede what already exists with soccer, so.
Are you anticipating that we're gonna maintain this field?
So, we have the same arrangement with soccer in terms of, uh, what we pay to be able to rent the fields. And I know there's some efforts or the town covers as far as the, um, grass and whatnot. Uh, as we do with Oak Ridge, we would do the same here, uh, which is we own all the painting and, uh, everything else to make sure that it's, uh, upkept in that area.
I, I do have a, a, a question about that. Um, having a little bit experience, my son played youth football at Oak Ridge and, uh, the Jets and on into high school. The, the football's obviously played in the fall. It's a wet season. And, uh, football's a little different than soccer because football, you got, you know, twenty-some guys right there in a, in a small nucleus. And a lot of times, they're focused between the forties a lot. Um, my, I would have a concern, um, and just from experience, that we would be, um, damaging the fields in certain areas. Uh, I can give you example. If you go up at the end of the Northwest season, if you go to the Northwest High School, you can see certain spots, you know, where just the majority of the play takes place. Sidelines is one of them because all the kids are on sidelines. They're walking back and forth. Um, so I would have a concern about, um, just the difference in maintenance, um, between soccer and, and, you know, soccer and football, just from my experience. And, uh, I would also want to, want to have an idea of who would make the call as far as playing. I know foot, my, I, I've been there. I know everybody wants to play and, and get out there and play, but, but I, that, what I don't want to do is, is tear the fields up beyond a, a normal wear and tear situation. And I think football does pose that a little bit more than soccer does, just because of the, the, the concentration of folks are a little bit more in the same spot and they're digging and they're, you know, grinding and stuff. Um, anybody got any thoughts on that?
Well, y- you're absolutely right. Between the forties, I mean, we, we know that's a, a high, high-use spot in football. I would offer, you know, at eleven U, uh, and ten U and nine U and eight U, that those age groups, they're just simply not strong enough as, as the high school boys to where, you know, you see the damage. I'm not saying no damage will be done. That would be imprudent to say. But, uh, you know, at the same time, I don't, I don't, I don't envision that being as bad. The, the Orma doesn't look, Oak Ridge Military Academy, I'm not saying that field looks great, but it, I don't really see a profound difference in the damage from, you know.
Well.
I, I think that's a good place to look, if, you know, if you want to see kind of what's being used similarly today.
Well, the only, my only argument with Oak Ridge Military is it's, it's more of a clay field and it's just fescue grass. It's not a, it's not a manicure turf like we've got where we're, we're, we're growing a, a different kind of turf out here, a little bit more level. I've, I've, I've been on Oak Ridge. My son's played on Oak Ridge Field. I, I mean, the, the Military Academy, it, it's not the smoothest field as opposed to what we've got out here. I, I would just want to have some sort of, um, some sort of agreement, um, in place that if, you know, after a year, if it does seem like we've got some spots that are, that are worn, that we have a mechanism to, you know, that the town's not on the hook to basically reseed half the field, you know, through something we didn't, we did not anticipate. That's all, my, my concern.
Out of curiosity, how long ago did your son play on the, uh, Orma field?
Um, he played mostly lacrosse on that field, but I didn't know, I mean, it's, when I've been out there on the field, it hadn't been super smooth, but it's been, it's been a little while. Um, we played mostly our games at, um, the school, uh, at the park. And but, but the, you know, the park was very funny about getting on the fields. If it's the slightest bit of rain, you weren't getting on the fields. And for whatever reason, you know, as a parent, you, you're like, wow, you know, we're paying for it. But as a, as a councilman, you know, I, I see their points, like, you don't want to have to go out there on Monday morning and reseed ha- or sod half the fields because they're torn up from, you know, six, five games or whatever they had out there.
What, what again is the agreement that you have with Oak Ridge?
Yeah, we maintain the field. So, for the last, uh, year and a half, we've done all the maintenance, all the painting, all the seeding, all the everything over there to ensure, as part of our agreement with them. Uh, if you looked on the field and just drive by proof of concept, uh, there's no dead spot in there, uh, whatsoever. So, we've gotten multiple compliments from teams already in the last year and a half that have noted, uh, the superiority of the field. We have a lot of landscapers as coaches on there as well. So, folks that are volunteering, uh, not getting paid to make sure that everything goes. And, uh, I, I agree with, uh, Derek's comment. These kids are not heavy enough. We, even on the sidelines as we're sitting there, they're not digging into the things. It's equivalent to soccer cleats with what's happening. As long as we don't bring sleds on to the primary field, that's the only thing that's been tearing it up, um, from what I understand and, and past experience. And we don't have a sled for practice.
What is your, um, I mean, what is your policy on, uh, on, on when it rains on a Saturday? Do you play? What, what's the point that you say the fields are too wet?
We stay in alignment with the Oak Ridge Military Academy and we just communicate with what, uh, they determined, uh, where it goes. But the field has been strong enough that even in drizzle, mist, and whatnot, it's been sufficient. But it's on a case-by-case basis.
But, I mean, I, I don't disagree with, you know, that there, there's a difference and, and, you know, for, I, I don't disagree with you on the weight and all that stuff. I just want to make sure that, um,
Yeah.
until we see it for a year that we do have some sort of, uh.
I, I would want to make sure our guys, the, the ones that we work with are the only ones doing, uh, you know, any field maintenance in terms of, of.
No, I agree.
Planning. I mean, a prime example, you know, uh, uh, a good Samaritan with a, with a open, nice heart thought it would be a good idea to fill a hole in that field last year with some, with some rock, uh, and unfortunately, that's not the way you fill a ho- a hole in that field.
I, I agree.
And the soccer program lost three Saturdays of games while that issue, uh, was resolved. That was back in April, late April, so, you know, if.
And I'll just cut to the chase. I mean, I would just wa- wanna say, if there's, if there's some, as you said, dead spots, bald spots, whatever, that, that, um, at the end of the season, that, um, you know, we can work together somehow to repair those without the town coming completely out of pocket, if it's directly related to football.
We're, yeah, we're, we're not, we're not interested.
We should look at the field right now to get a baseline.
Yeah, we're.
Uh, because if we don't do that, you're gonna think some of the divots out there were caused by football and they're not. It's caused by whatever else, but it's not like the fields are.
They, they, they tear the fields up soccer.
Yeah, I mean.
I know, and I'm, I'm not saying wear and tear.
They're, they're public use fields.
It will be, it'll be hard for these guys to do a trial run because they're gonna put goalposts up. That's gonna be a ca- a pretty good cost.
Well, now, I, I get it, but, but, um, you know, they're public use fields, but if an entity is, is leasing the fields for a specific use, then I think they should at least have, have some, some ownership if there's excessive damage. I'm not saying, I'm not saying we go out there every, every, um, whatever, little bald spot or whatever. I'm just saying if we, at the end of the year, if there are, you know, spots this big that are worn out, that, that, um.
Like there are now.
The association at least, you know, addresses it.
What, what are we doing now?
Nothing.
Well, we need to, well, we really need just fields to rest a little bit, but we don't have the mechanism to do that right now until we can fence it.
If you do have a chance to drive by and look at the Military Academy fields for the last year and a half, I mean, that's our proof right there.
And that's kind of what I was alluding to.
It's in good shape. I, I see it quite a bit.
They're out there quite a bit. That's, it's part of our agreement to make sure.
It looks good, you know.
Yeah.
What is the fee that you're proposing?
Yeah, and I'll include that in the motion.
Okay, so that's, that's already set with us?
Yeah. It, it's on our fee schedule.
Yeah, I mean, we're not, we're not interested in making a profit. We just.
If I'm correct, all we're doing, Parks and Rec's already renting the fields and they just.
Yeah.
Right.
And, and, and I'm thrilled to see that the fields will get this kind of use and, and our, and our lights will get this kind of use. We, we had quite an investment on, on those lights and, you know.
And we're working on the, and we're working on the concession stand. We're getting closer.
I appreciate that.
We're getting closer. I assure you, we're getting closer.
Oh, my gosh.
I want to see football here to stay, you know, I.
I would too. I would too.
The first, uh, leagues they had in nineteen sixty-nine. That's been a long time ago.
Yeah.
It went for a couple of years and then it, it went out. And then, uh, then it come back with Clay and, uh, and David there for a little bit. And I don't know what happened there, but.
Well, I, I was shocked.
I'd like to see, I mean, you, you guys get a hold of it right and it'll, it'll be here to stay.
I was shocked that we didn't have one whenever they built it, but, uh, that's the way it was. But it looks like it'll work to me. If, at the very worst, maybe doing something with that pathway, but that may or may not have to be done.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I think it fits like a glove like it is. And, I mean, Jimmy and Jordan and I measured it off.
I was excited after them lights on, looking at it. I could just imagine everybody being out there. I mean, it's, it's, it's exciting to think about it being back here and the kids from this area being able to play. And, uh, we had to fix it over here. There we'll just fix it.
Yeah, yeah. And if we're gonna start fixing holes, you know, let's, let, let's fix the ones we have now and not, you know, lay it on somebody else.
No, and I'm not saying, um, I'm not saying like I say, wear and tear, but I'm just saying there's an obvious relation to, to a football season. Because it's gonna be wet. It's gonna be wetter as we go into the fall. And, and we do get more rain in the fall. Uh, that's all I'm, I'm worried about.
So, rain, rain, I hear you. I think, you know, we can collaborate, use your best judgment, but on a rainy day, uh, you know.
It's the same with soccer.
Yeah.
Uh, we have, uh, how many years of soccer in the area? That's the, the.
And, and the soccer program has done a fantastic job of really just taking, it take a lot of pride in those fields and, and very grateful to have them, but, uh, they show their, uh, gratu- you know, their great gratuity through, you know, how well they maintain them and, you know, uh, how much they care about them. And, and that's, that's really what I'm looking forward to from a football program. That and just having games up here at night and the entire, you know, town and community, the impact that would have. And no, we don't have enough parking, so, yeah, parking will be through the roof, but we'll deal with it.
Hey. They don't have enough parking at North Kernersville. Well, I don't, I ain't been to game and all that. But I, I, I parked a mile away one time, walked down the interstate to get to the Jets and the Eagles when they did that first kickoff game for the Probes.
Yep. No, it's, it's, it's gonna be great. A lot, a lot of positive momentum and this is, you know, for this to happen in the, is it the second year of the football program's existence or third?
This is the second year, so first year in Pop Warner last year, and then this is the first year or year two, uh, in the, in the, um, the highest tier league. And what's fun is we have, um, almost the majority of the kids are from the Stokesdale Elementary School. Uh, we've got kids in the unofficial Stokesdale area of Oak Ridge, Kernersville, that are still Stokesdale line. And we've got kids in Rockingham County. And then we've got kids, um, that have made friends, have continued to come on with the same team over year over year. They talk about it in school. We did a kickoff at the, uh, Open House, uh, at Stokes Elementary, and quite a few kids came up there from football. And it was great to see them congregate together. Uh, it's, it's just, it's football.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Any other questions for Jordan?
Anything else?
I gotta have a motion if you.
Yes, you are. Let's, let's, let's go for the motion.
I'm gonna make a motion to authorize Stokesdale Parks and Rec to utilize the athletic field football games, uh, in accordance with Stokesdale Parks and Rec's home game needs, that the first night of football games occur on September twentieth, twenty-five. Uh, that Stokesdale Parks and Rec agrees to pay the town of Stokesdale the standard hourly field rate. A rental fee is posted on the town's fee schedule, which is exactly what the soccer program pays. Uh, that Stokesdale Parks and Rec be authorized to install field goalposts at or in close proximity uh, to the field schematic presented in tonight's town council meeting. That Stokesdale Parks and Rec be responsible for all field painting, trash removal that had been littered on property grounds, including parking areas during games. That the town of Stokesdale Town Administrator Robbie Wagner share the contact information for Ron Overby with Renata, uh, Renata Electric in hopes that Stokesdale Parks and Rec will connect with Ron for any questions and consulting advice on the electrical lines to ensure the field goalposts do not intrude on the electrical infrastructure. He's the guy that installed the lights and just may be a good resource for you.
Yep.
Now, second. If you, are you done?
That's it.
All right. Yeah. I have a first, I have a second. Do I have any discussion?
Just one question.
Yes, sir.
The hours of operation that the town adopted, do they need to be changed to accommodate these games or?
The park? The park operation hours?
Yeah, uh, well, we've never enforced them, the hours that we have now. So, I mean, you know, if we want to change it, that's fine.
Or you can just say that the games there will be excluded from the hours operation if that's, is that?
Yeah. Yeah, if there's.
We can deal with that at another meeting.
Yeah.
You're gonna say if it comes up.
These are young kids too. We need to get them home by like eight-thirty or so, at the very latest.
Oh, they need to be out late.
Yeah. Saturday night lights, buddy.
What, what time?
Sleep on Sunday.
Hey, what time will this game?
If they're a little late out at football games, I'd like to pull off.
What, what time does the game on the twentieth start?
So, we've got tentative start times, uh, at ninety-minute increments, beginning at two.
At what time?
Two-thirty.
Two-thirty?
Four o'clock, five-thirty, and then seven o'clock.
On September the twentieth?
Hmm.
It, I'm, I'm, I don't know what the day of the week is. Is that a Saturday?
Saturday. All games are on Saturdays.
You're not interfering with school. We're not talking about school day, uh, playing. Okay. I don't have anything else. I've got a first and I got a second. I'll take a vote. Mr. Rigsby?
Uh.
Mr. Foye?
Aye.
Mr. Landriss?
Aye.
And I am also aye.
Jordan, we appreciate, we appreciate what y'all do. The, the sports program, people, I don't know, I think people realize it, but it's important. It's like I say, in our football program closed in, in, in years ago when we had baseball, uh, you, you had to make a team, so some kids got cut. A lot of those kids didn't, uh, didn't get to play, ended up at the pool halls and places. And it was quite a few of those places around here at that time. And, and they get into doing other things. So, the sports program keeps them busy, keeps them in shape. And it's a, it's a great thing that y'all do. And, and I for one appreciate it. And I'm sure, I'm, the council would say the same thing.
Absolutely.
It's really great that y'all do that and put on, you put a lot of time in. And, and we appreciate it.
We are genuinely grateful for the, um, help and support and just enthusiasm, uh, that the town has for us. So, we, we couldn't do it without that. So, thank you very much as well.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you. Okay, our next item is, uh, consideration of a change order for water service at nine zero seven four U S Highway one fifty-eight. Mr. Landriss, I believe you have this?
Okay, uh, on nine fourteen twenty-five, we approved, uh, to, um, put a new meter box in. It was eleven hundred and seventy-four dollars and sixty-seven cents. The customer, and, uh, he wants to, uh, he wants the box at a, at a different location. Now, we're talking about something that was not his, his mistake. Um, so you see the picture in the, on the back sheet?
Yes.
There's a blue, blue mark there. Uh, Gene Robson suggested we put it there and it solves a couple of problems. I don't, I won't go into it all unless you want me to.
No.
We'd already decided to do this. Uh, there's an estimate here for fifteen hundred dollars because they're actually gonna have to move the box in, in a line. And, uh, what I'd like to do is make a motion and, um, to spend up to two thousand dollars, because he says this is just an estimate. And I don't want to come in. Uh, I, I think it'll probably be fine, but you don't know. Um, but, uh, spend up to two thousand dollars to rectify this situation and get this customer's water, uh, the, the way he wants it.
Second.
There's a second? Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Okay. A motion, a second. Uh, conversation. Uh, just, just. This addresses the, uh, uh, issue that I think Mr. Jones was talking about in our last meeting where, uh, we, we are, where our sales need to be sure that we can, um, properly indicate to any contractor where these things are supposed to go, whether it's with a, a blue pole or a blue paint or a, evidently, uh, the way we're doing it may or may not be quite sufficient, but I think it speaks to that. Other than that, I'm done. Mr. Rigsby?
Just for clarification, um, our discussion in the last meeting about this, we haven't, we, it sounded like you said, we haven't installed this already based on the last meeting, have we?
No, this, this money has not been spent. We also, we'll just be canceling that out.
Okay.
Uh, they, they're just moving it. The, the, really what it is is where it was put, it was put in the wrong spot. And the, uh, it's right at a driveway where they're gonna be turning into it. And, uh, the reason we was doing that box is you could, if you run over it, they're gonna put concrete under and all that with a, a customer would rather have it in a different spot, th- this back toward the road, um, where he won't have to worry about that and where he puts his driveway.
Okay, I just.
And like I say, it's not, it's not the customer's fault, so we need to make it right.
But the box, the box is in place.
It is, but it's gonna be in a different place. And Gene Robson is the one that looked at. It is, but it's gonna be in a different place, and Gene Robson is the one that looked at it, I'm going over, you know, he uh, he suggested it, you know, go there and I, and Gene's put a lot of these in, and so I'm um, I'm okay with what Gene says.
All right.
Excellent.
Okay, any further discussion? Well, let's take a vote, Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foye?
Aye.
Mr. Landrath?
Aye.
And I am also aye. We'll open the floor again for any public comments, I would ask you that you limit your, your comments to three minutes, please. Somebody's made reference to something going on tonight, I don't know what it is, uh, would anyone like to speak? If that's the case, we're gonna ask for council comments.
Y'all still keeping a muzzle on them over there? Good.
Are they conspiring?
No, no.
Well, I'll make a comment.
Oh.
Uh, if y'all are not gonna get started here.
Go for it.
I'm excited about football coming back to Stokesdale. And I think the kids will be excited too to be playing in their home park, so, thank you guys.
Mr. Rigsby?
No, I was just gonna filibuster tonight, so we go into at least halftime, so um, that is all. I'd like to talk about the constitution, is Tim's copy down there I can reference?
Yeah, it is, it's right here.
Yeah.
I got mine.
Drag this out a little bit.
Do you need Mary Mary Had a Little Lamb or anything like that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right.
All right.
Mr. Foye?
All right, just thanks guys for being here and all you, all y'all do, and look forward to September twentieth and uh, you know, good luck. Thanks.
I do too, I've, I'll, I'll add to what everyone else is saying, this is, this is really, it is kind of exciting for the, for the town that we're able to do this, so uh, personally, I'm very pleased, very, very pleased. With that said, uh, let me go and make a couple of announcements, and then we're gonna have to go into a closed session. My announcements are, tonight, uh, we have a uh, planning board meeting that's scheduled for seven PM. On September the first, there's a town hall closed, uh, the town hall will be closed on September the first for Labor Day. September the ninth, twenty twenty-five, the regular town board of adjustment meeting is scheduled for seven PM. On nine eleven, twenty twenty-five, the regular town council meeting is set for seven PM.
Motion on closed session?
I make a motion that we go into closed session, the closed session in accordance with NCGS one forty-three dash three one eight dot one one A three, closed session, permitted purposes of policy of this state, the closed session shall be held only when required to permit a public body to act in the public interest as permitted in this section. A public body may hold a closed session and exclude the public only when a closed session is required. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foye?
Aye.
Landrath?
Aye.
And I am aye. Thanks again.
Back in order. I would like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Third.
Do I have any discussion?
Aye.
Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foye?
Aye.
Mr. Landrath?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am also aye.
Man, look at the crowd we drew. Thank you, folks.